You ready, Ed?
Okay.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I want to tell everyone here, welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for January 2019. And if you'll join us, I've asked Vice Chairman Langley to the implication, and Commissioner Brin to do the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful that you've allowed us to come into a brand-new year, a year in which we've never seen before. And Father, now we just ask for your wisdom, and your guidance, and your understanding of all the matters of your people. Touch our hearts and minds, God, that we will have empathy for the needs of your people. We offer this meeting into your mighty hand, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask if any of the commissioners got any kind of conflict of interest on the agenda for tonight? Hearing none? I need approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, the Mayor of Aurora has asked if he could do his presentation first, because he has a ten tonight, so if we can make that one change. Yeah. Do we need to amend the agenda?
I... Who made the motion? Who made the motion?
You just amend that.
Yeah, that's right. With the change.
Hold in favor?
Ah.
Okay, we open it up to public comments. Meg? Meg Howdy?
Good evening. My name is Meg Howdy. I'm the Executive Director for the Washington Harbor District Alliance, and I wanted to get you up to date on the Small Business Revolution. I'm sure you've seen a lot online and in the newspaper, and we are excited to say that out of 12,000 nominations, Washington has made it to the top 10 of the Small Business Revolution Main Street. And so, that is a TV show, and they will actually be coming into town on January 23rd and 24th. They'll come in, we'll have a reception for them to meet our small business owners, and talk with some leaders, and really get an opportunity to learn about Washington and our beautiful county. And one of the reasons that they chose us was because the city, the county, and lots of organizations that are here work closely together. And that's one reason that they chose to come to Washington. And hopefully, we will move forward, whether we move forward or not, to the next step in the top five. We will get the opportunity on March 11th for our local small businesses to have a marketing seminar. And this is a great opportunity for them to be able to get some great knowledge so that they can continue to grow their small business, because as you know, that's what makes our county grow. And so, that is open, actually, to all small businesses within the county. And so, we just wanted to thank you for your support, and ask for your continued support as we move along. When we make it to the top five, I've decided to say not if, when we make it to the top five, then we're going to be open to voting to make it into the top one. And when they will actually come in, do filming of a TV show, and then $500,000 is going to be put into our small businesses here. They'll choose six. And so, we just want to thank you and ask for your continued support.
Good job. Thank you. Ms. Mish?
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Evans and Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time. Allow me to read the statement, and please understand that I use the word jail instead of detention center for this, just for efficiency. I don't want to bounce back between the two words.
Could you pull that microphone a little?
Toward me a little. Is that better?
Give it for us, Stan. Microphone.
You want me to move it a little? How you doing, Stan? Nice to see you. I mean, Commissioner.
No, no, Stan.
I'm here to talk about the Beaufort County Jail, the one having been pushed long past reasonable usage in terms of functional space, the one that because of 24-hour day usage is the equivalent of 189 years old, the one of decrepitude that sits underneath our courthouse. Having seen the facility, I am disheartened for all of us in this community. What has happened here? Do we believe Band-Aid solutions will stop the clear need for a new facility to be built? Where are we now in that process of building a new jail, as reality says the jail will not rebuild itself? What is the continual cost of doing nothing? Since the USDA withdrew its collateral partnership in 2014 to build a new jail, what has been the cost? Of moving detainees to be housed in other facilities? For transporting detainees back and forth for court dates? Or when the facility is closed due to hurricane flooding? Do we have costs covered when the jail has to be closed indefinitely, excuse me, or even longer term, maybe permanently? What will be the cost of other housing for detainees in the jail if the jail is shut down and new construction happens concurrently? Going back as far as 2004, it is in this board's minutes, the request by an outgoing commissioner to take care of getting a new jail facility for fear of lawsuits. Here we are, going 15 years later, deep in it. Do we want to continuously invite lawsuits based on our negligence of not figuring this thing out? What has become of our community of spirit? Are we so adversarial in our beliefs we have become dysfunctional, hold back, deny, point fingers, bring ourselves down with endless politicking? Let's get past this and move forward. I suggest each of us in the community connect within a civic group and ask for a tour of our jail. Find out how the justice system works, is working or not working here. Learn what a collateral partnership means. Learn about governance, and how we can support our body of governance in a way that benefits and reflects who we are or who we want to be here in Beaufort County. Is the USDA there to readdress the collateral partnership with us to build a new jail, with or without a referendum? I am here to respectfully ask you to put this issue in your planning. Doing nothing is not an option. Let's get this done. Thank you.
Give him an item for presentation. Mayor Williams and Martin.
Yes, thank you for allowing us the time, and I apologize for the date. I actually wrote this originally in 2018. It should be 2019, obviously. So, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, what we're going to do is give you a very brief presentation on Aurora Industrial Park, or colloquially known as the Contractor Village, that we hope to be able to build in Aurora. As you know... Can I just turn the lights off?
Sure.
As you know, Aurora sits next to the Nutrien Aurora Mining Facility, which I believe makes up about 17% of the county's property tax on an annual basis. You can see the scale of the mine compared to the town there, just down the bottom of the picture, to the south of the mine. The mine itself is not only a mine, but also a processing facility, and I don't know if anybody's drinking Coca-Cola, but if anybody does, the phosphoric acid that goes into Coke comes from this mine. And so, many people in the U.S. actually have part of Beaufort County in them, once they drink the Coke. So, the Contractor Village is just south of the town of Aurora, basically sitting there, just south. And the reason it's needed is to boast... boost, sorry, or boast, the economic development in Aurora, which has faced stagnant growth and declining population. In fact, I think the population has halved in about the last 30 years. Also, increase the property tax base of Aurora, and obviously, therefore, the county. Provide a safe and attractive workplace for the contractors. These are people that work on the mine site, but they basically work in trailers. There's no water, no sewer, no paved roads, porta-potties are the way of the day. And so, the park would offer offices, lay-down yards, fabricating, and repair facilities to those Nutrien contractors. Also, we believe because those people will be off the mine site, retail and restaurant sales will increase in the town. Right now, you know, if you're on the site, it's very hard to get off, to come into town, say, to go to lunch or whatever, so people stay on the site most of the day. As I said, the location is just south of the town. There's 51 acres of the site, 42 of which are usable, and the cost is about $450,000 for the site. It has been rezoned for this use, and the town has the sewer and water capacity to accommodate the park. And there is a cooperating landowner at present who's looking to sell the site. The adjoining acreage is also available for possible future expansion. So, if you remember that other aerial, this is actually an aerial of the site with a layout of the individual lots. Typically, there'll be about one and a half acres, small office, lay-down yard, things like that. There are a couple of larger sites to the right, and then, but as you get to the river, then the land becomes marshy and not usable. So, the mayor has been very active in pushing this project. In fact, this was one of the first projects I heard about when I first came here, and I guess you guys have been working on it for about four, four years at least. Alan Paul, who's liaison with the Nutrien contractors, done a great job in terms of talking with them about it. John Acton is a real estate developer out of Raleigh, who has extensive knowledge about developing such a park. And then, Michael Clemmons with the East Group has done a lot of the planning, permitting, and land preparation services. Current status is that the, I think in your package, you have the resolution from the Beaufort County Economic Development Advisory Board supporting this. There is strong interest from the Nutrien contractors themselves, has been confirmed. And four companies have actually shown a lot of interest. Roberts Company, which is a publicly traded company, EnviroVac, McCluskey...
McCluskey.
McCluskey, sorry. International and DRR Pipes, all have shown interest.
Pumps.
Pumps. Sorry. Reading too quickly. And then, there's also conversation with 15 other contractors. And the senior management at Nutrien are supportive of this process. One thing that, the reason we're talking about the contractors themselves is the idea is that even though this would be a town park, we would not move forward until we knew that the contractors were either pre... you know, we pre-sell the sites, or they're... we have some sort of documentation that they will move forward with their plans to move into the park. So, the potential jobs is about 39 existing jobs on the mine that would come off into the industrial park, and then 24 new jobs would be created in the park from various contractors. They would, as I say, either buy or lease their facilities. As we've said, there'd be water, sewer. One of the issues also on the mine is that off the mine, they'd be subject to the Occupational Safety and Health Administration regulations. On the mine, it's mining regulations, and that's a lot different than OSHA. And again, proximity to the facilities of the town. So, all in all, this is going to take about a, about 10-month period to develop the site.
I would say so, once we get started. We're going to try to pre-sell everything in advance before we get started, but we hope to have... we won't be able to start after having 70% of the money that we're trying, that we're requesting. And so, we'd go ahead and start construction at that point. We've got Golden Leaf. I think Golden Leaf has made us an offer that's going to be very favorable for us. It's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure. And we've got work from the governor's office in Pryor, Houston, today, that they're going to get behind us on this thing also.
And that would be funds to invest in the park in terms of the public infrastructure, in terms of the roads, in the facility, and other utilities to be extended to there. The reason for the need for investment, public investment, is that to develop the park by using public funds, that the park needs to be owned publicly. It needs to be owned by the town, so the investment in the roads, the sewer and water extension can be made. And then, as a park, as a public park, it can then be sold off to the private interests, creating jobs and investment. So, the economic development, the reason, the public purpose for the park is the creation of jobs and the creation of investment, and therefore, property taxes off the land. The next steps, I think we've even somewhat talked about it. We did meet with Dan Gerlach on January 2nd of this year, and he was very favorably inclined to it, and probably potentially a couple hundred thousand there. As Cliff said, the governor is very interested, and hopefully, and actually, interestingly, just before Christmas, the Department of Commerce sent out a request of where could they invest IDF funds into public infrastructure. Obviously, this was one of the projects on the list. So, basically, the next steps would be to, you know, identify, to talk more closely with the contractors, identify the costs more closely, develop the planning process, and then, probably in either a month or two, come back to you with a request for a loan to the town of Aurora to invest in the land, with the idea that already the companies would have signed off, kind of pre-sold it, so the money would be returned as quickly as possible, once the infrastructure's in place.
Well, I couldn't have said it better myself. I was trying to pre-sell the land, but we're going to need a little bit of money from, some money from the county to go ahead and purchase the land, and we hope to have it pre-sold. A little bit of money for a short while, the close on the real estate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, gentlemen? Any questions?
Yeah. How many acres you buying?
Well, it's 51 acres, and we have to buy the 51 acres.
42 acres.
Usable at this time. And, but we really feel like that's not going to be enough land, so we had to continue on. And PCS, as we said, that it's successful, that there are going to make 110 acres to the right of that property.
Yeah. Is this land on the south side of 33 and bordering the creek?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Directly behind the fire department.
Directly behind the fire department. That's land that they'll never be able to mine, as you realize, you know, once they got close to the water, the last track of land they did created lots of problems for us, for them. You know, it's more seed than anything, closer to the mine.
Commissioner Brin?
You said you had a decline in population early in the program, and you say you're going to create 36, 24 to 36 new jobs. You going to try to fill them in Beaufort County?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And most people, you know, I think you've, I don't know if you've been on 33 around, either in the morning or in the evening, you can see the people commuting back into Chalkawinnity and Washington. Obviously, in the longer run, we'd love those people to stay in Aurora themselves, and I think this is somewhat the impetus for that, because, you know, if you want to stay in a place, you do want to have restaurants and a supermarket and things like that. So, with this project, bringing in, or bringing some of the money off the mine into the town, it'll create more restaurants, and hopefully, then that will spur more development.
Increase real estate values, if you can, because they have a little ton of it in Aurora.
Yeah.
It's just a win-win for us, it's going to bring jobs. And these are conservative estimates. We know it's going to create more jobs than this. Roberts Company has even suggested that they move their regional headquarters in Aurora if we get this thing done.
And you said you're going to come back in a month or two?
Yeah.
And ask for, I think it was $450,000 more?
A loan, yes.
A loan for two years?
Yeah. Yes.
And with the land as collateral?
Correct. Yeah. And at that time, it'll have infrastructure on it, so it'll be worth even more.
Yeah. It was good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, Anita?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here tonight with our auditor Jeff Best of Jeff Best CPA to give you a summary presentation of our 2018 audit. We did do things a little differently this year. We actually had the privilege of having Jeff attend our Finance Committee meeting last week, where he gave a very detailed presentation on the full 175 pages. And we noticed that meeting. We invited all the Commissioners, and I appreciate the ones that attended. I thought it was a really good session and a good lesson.
Everybody was getting tired by the end.
Yeah. After about an hour and 15 minutes in, we were ready to wrap things up, but I thought, I thought that was a good, good way for us to do it, kind of do a detailed presentation. And so, tonight, what we'll be doing is a summary presentation for you.
Thank you all for your attention, and a lot of good information.
We're actually going to tag-team this, and I'm going to let Jeff start us off.
Anita, you want to flip the lights back on?
Sure.
So, Anita, you going to push the...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
There you go. Are we good? Do y'all like them?
We're good. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity for our firm to do the audit again this year. Thank you, the staff, Ron, Anita, Sharon, and all the staff, for your help and cooperation. This is the summary review of the fiscal year-end 6/30/2018 audit. It was approved by the Local Government Commission, 12/4/2018. It has a standard and modified opinion, which means in our power opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. There was no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. You know, hand to the county. And there were two improvement points. These are areas where, these are recommendations where improvements could be made. They were both dealing with a Form 1571. On the first improvement point, expenditures were not requested for reimbursement all during the year. They were requested in July and May. And the last thing, the last point, our second rule, 1571, reporting travel expenditures. And we recommended that there's always a detailed receipt for the reimbursement as made.
Are you going to take questions during this, or when we finish?
Yep, anytime, yep. Yes, Commissioner, anytime.
Well, I have a problem with the comment that you made on those travel expenses, because, you know, it says, "While this is within the travel policy of Beaufort County, we recommend that the policy be rewritten to require detailed receipts. This will prevent unallowable items being reimbursed to the employee."
Yes, sir.
I was under the impression that we had never had a policy that didn't require receipts.
That's not my understanding.
Well, I always turn in receipts for everything that I buy when I'm on travel.
I've actually not gone back and looked specifically at the language in the policy, but I believe it says that you have to have a receipt. It doesn't say an itemized receipt. So, for example, someone could turn in a credit card receipt that shows a total with a tip. Now, that's the policy. Our practice has certainly been to require or to ask people to turn in an itemized receipt, and it's very rare for us to receive just a generic credit card receipt. I'm going to say 90, 98% of the time, we do get an itemized receipt, but there are times when people forget that, or they don't get that, and they just have the credit card receipt. And again, I think Jeff would say, "This is not a violation of our policy. This is just a recommendation."
That's correct. That is correct.
Do we have a per dime policy?
Per dime, yes.
We do have?
Yes.
What is that total for food today, for a day, for instance?
I don't know right off the top of my head. $31.75 for the day.
And you don't have to turn receipts in to get that?
You do. It's a, it's a per diem, so you have to turn in receipts to be reimbursed, as opposed to what I call a stipend would be, where you just get a, if you're going all day, you get the $31.75, and you know, you don't have to turn any receipts in.
But the most the employee can collect for a day would be $31.75?
Correct.
Gee, we haven't been doing that.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, and be happy to sit down and review anything with you, but...
We just haven't been doing it. I saw copies in my office of stuff that I requested two weeks ago, that showed $238 a day for hotel, $238 for hotel, and...
Well, now, that's separate from meals.
60, well, let me finish.
Okay.
And $62.50 a day for food, with no receipts. Every day with $62.50 for food. So, are you sure that your audit process in your department is doing what it should be doing on reviewing these things before they're paid?
My guess is $31.75 times two, I think is $62.50. There's probably two travelers. That's my guess.
There was no detail. You couldn't look at this piece of paper and tell who did what?
I would suspect that you were missing the next page, which would be the receipts. Our deputy finance officer, she reviews all the travel and signs off on it, and she ensures that the math calculations are correct, that they're not getting any more than the allowance that they're allowed, and that the receipts are actually taped onto a separate piece of paper and attached to the reimbursement request. So, my guess is you were just missing that third piece of paper.
What happens if, what happens if the review doesn't pass? If she finds a problem? What happens?
It gets sent back to the department head, and I'm not going to pay them for any more than the policy allows for them to be paid. If they have a P-card and they've charged it, then I'm going to garnish their check for it and get it back.
Well, I was really surprised that we didn't have a strong enough policy to cover this.
Again, I would say this is not a violation of policy. It was just a recommendation, and I think maybe the only reason you would even require a detailed receipt, which we do, and we get, I'd say, 98, 99% of the time. There might be one or two that slip through the cracks. It would be to show that there are no alcoholic beverages, which we do. We monitor that as well. We monitor that as well. Any other questions about the improvement points?
Well, I got just a comment. When we go to Washington DC, you can't eat breakfast for days.
Actually, the board is exempt from the travel policy.
You what?
The board is exempt from our travel policy. So those daily allowances do not apply to the board.
You've got a budget.
You still have to submit receipts.
But you do submit your receipts.
The Water District operating income loss, this is on the modified accrual. The first line item is for revenue. And this is the seven water districts. So you can see the revenue by water districts, operating expenses, the debt payments. Those debt payments include interest and then the income loss for the year. So on the modified accrual basis, each one of the seven water districts showed a profit or income for the year. The solid waste operating income loss on the modified accrual, revenue was $3,516. Expenses were $3,294 for a net income of $221,000.
So I just wanted to make one comment there because we did see a pretty good increase in our revenues of $182,000 in solid waste. And that is solely due to the fact that we started billing and collecting the solid waste fees on all the parcels, except for those that didn't have a structure on the site and also those that had the solid waste hauling contract. They would be exempt from that as well.
Enterprise Fund, this is the fund, fund statement of net positions. This is also for the water districts and also for the solid waste fund. I know that's kind of small. But if you look at the very, the very first line item is cash and cash equivalents. There was $8,232,000 in cash and cash equivalents in the seven water districts in the solid waste fund as of June 30th, 2018. Below that, under non-current, it's restricted cash. That was $90,000. Then you have the capital assets. Total capital assets, net depreciation was $59,278,000. Come to the very bottom of the schedule, total net positions was $30,085,000. All of the districts have a positive net positions except for District 2. District 2 has a negative net position of $615,000. And the solid waste has a positive net position of $795,000. We were talking, and probably a lot of these water projects or water facilities was funded with grant money. And when the grant money is received, that grant money comes in as income and it goes right straight to the net positions. The money, the facility purchased with the grant money is set up to depreciate over a period of time. A lot of times, it may be a 50-year depreciation. So if you look at these net positions, you say, man, there are some, there are some large net positions that may be misleading because of the grant money that was received to purchase the plant facility.
Any questions about the enterprise funds before we move into the general fund? Okay, general fund. This is a look at the total revenues and expenditures before transfers and debt for both 2017 and 2018. And as you can see there, we had a rather large increase in both revenues and expenditures in 2018 compared to the previous year. The reason for that, and Melanie, please correct me if I'm wrong, but historically, DSS, when they have qualified an applicant for both daycare and medical benefits, that activity would run through the county books. So for example, we would pay the vendors, the daycare payments and the medical service provider, the medical payments. And then we would file to get reimbursed the state and federal funds back. So all that revenue and the expenditures in 2017 and the years prior all flowed through the county. And then the state, early in fiscal year 1718, the state took over that processing. So that's why you see that large decrease there. Available fund balance, this is a five-year look at our fund balance. And you'll see that we did have a pretty significant drop there. That was all planned and budgeted. We spent approximately $2.3 million in available fund balance in 2018, entirely on capital improvements for county buildings and facilities. When we look at available fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures, you see that green line near the top, that is a target line. Currently, we've got a fund balance policy that states we're going to try to set a target balance for available fund balance of 35%. And you can see over the past five years where we've been in relation to that. At June 30th, 2018, we're at 27%. And there's been some debate over the last few years about, you know, is 35% a little on the high side? Does it need to be more around 25 or 30%? But right now, that's, that's what our policy says, is we're going to try to hit 35%. Top three revenues. Ad valorem taxes at 59%. Restricted intergovernmental revenues, that's all your federal and state funding, mostly for health and DSS. And then our sales tax revenues. And these three revenues together, they account for 94% of all the county funds that we receive in a year. Yes, sir.
I have one question.
Sure.
If we could go back just a little bit to the fund balance.
This slide?
You said the goal of the county is to achieve 35% fund balance.
Available, available fund balance.
Yeah, 35% available fund balance, which would be 35% of what our normal general funding would be for that year.
That's right.
What is the advantage for the county to have a fund balance of 35%?
So we like to keep a healthy fund balance for a couple of reasons. First of all, hurricanes or some kind of a natural event where we've got to have large cash outlays, you know, to get government up and running and repair facilities. Because typically, I mean, we will get reimbursed for all of that money, but it takes between 12 and 18 months to do that. And then the biggest reason is just for cash flow. We get all of our tax revenue in, in about a four to six, eight-week period. End of November, the month of December, and this week of January. So you've got, you know, the month of July, August, September, October, and some of November where you just have very little revenue coming in, but you've still got that one-twelfth of expenditures that are outlaying every month. So, and you know, like I say, there's been some debate about whether it's 35% too rich of a number? Is it a little too high? I can tell you the city has about 52% as a comparison.
However, the city also has a very, they need that because they run their utilities through their general fund. They don't do that?
No. They're separate enterprise funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Their, their fund balance, their general fund is a lot lower than ours.
Their general fund balance?
Oh, their general fund is a lot lower.
Oh, yeah, they probably have a $15 million budget. Ours is $60 million.
Yes.
Yeah. So back to the top revenues. We'll delve a little bit into ad valorem taxes since that is about 60% of our revenue source. You can see it was really flat. And of course, that's extremely alarming for me. I was like, what's going on here? We actually fell about $70,000 in collections when you compare year to year. And so what I found in my research is we have 10 years' worth of levies on the books. And when I look at the current year levy collections, they were actually up a little bit compared to last year. What was down was the prior year collections. So we've had a really vigorous effort over the last four or five years to collect all that old money sitting on the books for those prior year levies. And it's starting to catch up with us. I mean, we've collected it now. It's no longer there to collect. So that's why you saw the slight decrease there. Sales tax, we saw really good growth again in sales tax in 2018 compared to 2017. It was up about $375,000 or 4.3%. And of course, we all know this, this number right here. Our tax revenue for sales tax is solely tied to the economy. So if the economy's doing well, which it has been for the last couple, three years, then we tend to see really good sales tax revenue numbers. Restricted intergovernmental revenues, down drastically. Again, has to do with that change at DSS with the daycare and medical payments. So we're no longer processing those payments. We're no longer getting that reimbursement from the federal and state government. When we look at the expenditure side, our three big categories are education, at 33% of our spending, human services, and public safety. And all three of these categories together make up $45 million or 81% of our spending in the general fund. Education expenses increased by $696,000 when you compare 2018 to 2017. The public school allocation went up by $411,000 and the community college was given an additional $285,000. And these funds were provided to catch up on facility maintenance such as roofing projects, asphalt and paving projects, and HVAC work. We also purchased two activity buses for the public schools and a parcel of land near, I believe it was Washington High School. Human services, I'm going to sound like a broken record. Big decrease again because of the DSS processing of the daycare and the medical payments there. Public safety expenditures increased $1.2 million in 2018 compared to 2017. $495,000 of this increase was in the jail. And if you'll remember, we had some additional safekeeping fees in order to make the repairs at the jail. So that was a piece of that. And then also, we had a really large medical, inmate medical invoice that we were hit with at the very end of the year. EMS was up $450,000 from year to year.
Since you mentioned that, $346,000 for one person. And the sheriff says he didn't know anything about it. My question to you, not to the sheriff, is, is there a policy in place where we are monitoring the health expenses for inmates who are sent out of county?
Charlie, would you like to comment?
No, I asked if the, I asked if the county knows whether or not the sheriff's department is monitoring the cost because when this $346,000 appeared, everybody ran around and said, well, we didn't know anything about it. Well, somebody's supposed to know something about it. So my question to you is, do you have knowledge that the sheriff's department is monitoring out-of-county inmates' medical expenses?
I feel confident that they are. I think that when they say that they didn't know anything about it, it's just like the rest of us when we get medical care at a hospital. We don't know what the bill's going to be until we get it.
That's not the question. The question is, are we applying management practices to managing these costs? So now I'm going to ask the sheriff. Are you monitoring health expenses for out-of-county inmates? So you, you know what they are running. How often do you check on them?
We know. In that particular case, we did not know about the procedure until after the procedure was done. We didn't know. We knew that there was going to be a bill, but we didn't know how big the bill was going to be. We are keeping up with our inmates. But there's certain things that we're going to know before others.
But are we doing anything to monitor the health care for out-of-county inmates so this doesn't happen to us again?
I do not believe that there is a way that you can completely mitigate or stop anything like that from happening.
Gee.
Just saying that they're not going to be...
You're an investigator. That's not the question I ask. What are we doing to monitor those costs? You know, we should be monitoring those costs. We should have a handle on the health of the people that are out of county based on, we wrote a $346,000 check based on one piece of paper. We don't need to go through this again.
If we had the capability to house our own inmates, then we would have more capability to supervise what was going on with our inmates.
How difficult is it to call each of the jails that we are housing people out of county every week or two and say, does this individual have health issues? Have they done sick calls? What's going on with them? Is that difficult?
I can give you the information. And you can let me know in a couple of weeks how difficult it would be for you to do.
This is not a budget presentation.
No. Yes, it is. It's money, it's an expense that happened. It came up in an audit of something that we didn't have a handle on. This is not why we're doing this item. What? We have a responsibility to look after the taxpayers' money. We wrote a check for $346,000 and nobody's watching. I have a right as a commissioner to say, what are we going to do to make sure that this never happens again?
He just don't get sick.
You guys are doing your usual great job of looking after the taxpayers. This will be an agenda item at the next meeting. I really don't care. I care about the management of the county's money.
We did put in place a, I call it a stop-loss insurance policy to help protect us against this type of thing in the future. Charlie, can you, do you want to speak a little bit about the details of that? I'm not real familiar with the details.
In essence, what it is, is that every inmate that we have under our control would be subject to if they have a medical condition that reaches certain thresholds of the amount that the bill would be, then it would be a stop-loss insurance where we would have to have, pay a pretty high deductible for each one of those things. But then, once we get into if the bill was $200,000 or $250,000, which you took if we were dealing with a heart attack or somebody that would have to have brain surgery or something like that, then the insurance would cover a great, or a substantial amount of that cost. As opposed to it being all out of pocket.
Well, we're back to where I've been for some time. And that is, we need a better screening program within the county so that mental health cases, people who are, have severe conditions like this can be monitored early on and we can make arrangements to get them out on a ankle bracelet. I don't think a person that we have in safekeeping in Raleigh that we spent $346,000 on their health card, care is going to run very far. So you put them out on a health, you put them out on an ankle bracelet. Mental health, you, some of those people, you see what you can do for their mental health. My point in all of this is, we don't have a management system to do this.
Now, with that being said, the subject that we were talking about was a murder suspect. I mean, we're not, we're not talking about disorderly conduct or anything of that nature. We're talking about somebody who was put into jail and was going to be in jail until we have the evidence.
Well, we, we still need to be examining alternatives. A guy that's in, or a person, whoever it was, that's in that bad a shape, they're not going to run very far. It sounds like an ankle bracelet case to me.
Last slide here. This is a five-year look at our property tax collections. And you'll see, back in 2014, we experienced a really nice bump in our property tax collections. And that was the year that the state took over collecting the motor vehicle tax for us. So no longer did you have to come to the county offices to pay your motor vehicle taxes all through the year. You actually get them when you go down to the license plate agency and get your tag. So our collection rate for motor vehicles went from like 79% to 100% that year. And then also, that same year in 2014, we had an extra four months of collections. We actually had 16 months of collections instead of 12. So that then explains the decrease from 2014 to 2015 as we went back to the 12-month collections on motor vehicles. And then in 2016, we experienced a decrease because the largest industrial taxpayer in the county, they had a large change in their business personal property. And then in 2017, we had the two-cent adjustment. And of course, the 2018 is flat compared to the 2017. Any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Evans and commissioners. We have with us today Ryan Cox, which manages the mitigation program of the North Carolina Department of Emergency Management. And after our last commissioners' meeting, we had some questions that came forward, both from individual commissioners and administration about some of the mitigation programs. And we've asked him to come and give just a short clarity of the funds and programs that are available and exactly how they process. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn that over to Ryan, and after he speaks, Chris is going to close that out. Mr. Cox, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you for having me this evening. Turn the light out so you can see the slide. One thing I am going to go ahead and give you all, it's a study that was done by the National Institute of Building Sciences regarding mitigation nationwide. There's some pieces about North Carolina in there, but overall, the takeaway from that is, for every dollar spent in mitigation, we save $6 to the federal government for recovery purposes. So, it's been what has actually pushed Congress to putting a little more money into mitigation in the last few years. What is hazard mitigation? The idea is, hazard mitigation is the effort to reduce the loss of life and property by lessening the impact of disasters. So, when we get a house out of the floodplain and it doesn't flood again, we don't have to pay responders to go out and save these folks. We don't have to pay insurance, flood insurance, claims, and it gets the individuals out of harm's way as well. Benefits of hazard mitigation, again, it supports the risk reduction, supports risk-reduction activities. So, risk including everything from loss of life and property. Improves resiliency. It allows the communities to bounce back quicker from natural disasters. Eliminates the impact of future events. If we elevate a home and then we have another disaster, that home should lessen, the damages will be a lot less than what they were before it was elevated. When we elevate homes, we elevate them to at least base flood elevation plus one foot. I'm not sure what the freeboard is in Beaufort County, but two feet? I think I heard somebody say that.
It's zero.
I've heard two feet.
No, it's zero.
Is it zero?
I do the work. I write the certificates. I file the reports.
So, eliminates, when we do the elevations, they are at least a base flood elevation. Provide long-term solutions. For example, projects that elevate a home reduces risk. This is all the things I've said. Whereas buying, instead of buying sandbags and using pumps to reduce flooding, then we're actually getting, we're doing long-term flood reduction. Offers cost-effective solutions to be funded projects, and helps avoid repetitive damages from homes. There are several repetitive loss houses in our properties and severe repetitive loss properties in Beaufort County. The first, did I skip one? Yes, I did. So, there's two types of non-disaster programs. This is the pre-disaster mitigation program and the flood mitigation assistance program. Both of these are non-disaster, and they're appropriated annually by Congress. The priorities due for both of these change from year to year. They are 75% federal share, 25% local share. The flood mitigation assistance is a little bit different. It is tied to the NFIP program, the National Flood Insurance Program, and it's more of a sliding scale cost share, where the SRL, severe repetitive loss properties, are 100% federal share, and the repetitive loss properties are 90-10. Any others that are not considered a rep loss are 75-25. This year, we did, for both of these programs, we received, Congress appropriated more than they've appropriated ever. $200 million for pre-disaster mitigation and $160 million for flood mitigation assistance, as you can see here. $70 million was set aside for community flood mitigation assistance. This is where we develop projects in advance of submitting an application, and then the following year, it is expected that the application will be submitted for whatever we did with the advanced assistance funds. The community flood mitigation projects, this is where we're doing, trying to do flood mitigation projects at a larger scale. So, we're trying to protect multiple houses through, could be stormwater, could be infrastructure-type projects that will protect 100, 15, 20, 100 homes versus doing one home at a time. $90 million was set aside this year for the combination of technical assistance, planning, and severe repetitive loss and repetitive loss properties. Technical assistance, we usually receive every year, and then planning, we don't have much of a need for planning in North Carolina, as every state or every county and municipality, with the exception of two, have hazard mitigation plans in the state of North Carolina. One of those communities is a defunct community, so therefore, they're really not even counted in that. But when you look at the numbers that FEMA reports, they are still on the report. Let's see. Then there's 404 mitigation, hazard mitigation assistance. So, this is following a federal disaster. It is a 75-25% cost share. However, the North Carolina General Assembly allocates funds to make the match through the DRA's Acts of '16, '17, and '18. They've done this historically since Hurricane Fran. We are in enhanced plan state. That means that we have been, we have gone through the tests of our grant management, and we receive 20% of the total disaster versus just 15% in the state. The difference, that made the difference of a total of $25 million for Hurricane Matthew. So, funds can be used for the following types of projects. The 5% initiative projects are stream gauges and generators. It's generally what we have done in the past. These are projects that don't require benefit-cost analysis. They're initiative-type projects that we're just, we're trying to test new types of mitigation. The 7% is hazard mitigation planning. That's how we have hazard mitigation plans in the state. We will not be submitting this year on Hurricane Florence for any hazard mitigation plans because we funded those through Hurricane Matthew, to include Beaufort County and all the municipalities. One other thing about hazard mitigation plans, hazard mitigation plans are required for communities to receive public assistance, category C through G. 100% of the remaining funds will be used for acquisitions, elevations, mitigation, reconstruction, safe rooms. This could include other projects, other wind-type projects. If you want to do some wind retrofits, if the county's interested in that, could be installing generators on shelters, EOCs, and that would not just be installing the generator, that would also be installing the automatic transfer switch and related wiring needed. The way we get to a total disaster, hazard mitigation grant, with a hazard mitigation grant program, is to take the total of individual assistance payouts plus public assistance payouts equals a total disaster. Total disaster times 20% gives us the hazard mitigation grant program total. Project types, acquisition, demolition. This is probably the most popular project type that we do in the state. Requires structure to be removed from the property in perpetuity. Impertuity is forever. All impervious surface will be removed. That includes parking lots and building. Everything there will be removed. There are very limited things that we can do with these properties going forward. I've seen communities put parks on them. That is an allowable use for them. They've, I've seen a lot of them return to natural state to include wooded lots. I have seen greenways going across them. So, there are some things that we can do with these properties. They're not just maintain grass-cutting properties for the rest of their, till the end of time. That is, there are other things that we can do that are green, that we can make use of these properties.
I can add to that. In this particular avenue, the goal is not to remove that property from our county. It's to remove it from that hazardous location and put that back somewhere else in a safer place. So, the ultimate goal during this phase is not for us to move tax revenue out of our county, it's to put it in a safer place within our county.
Thank you for that, because you reminded me that we do have, for hazard mitigation grant program with Hurricane Matthew and with Hurricane Florence, we're going to have state acquisition and relocation funds available. That's made available by the General Assembly through the Disaster Recovery Acts. That will be, let me get my numbers out. For qualified homeowners, there'll be a max of $50,000 plus up to $5,000 in moving expenses. So, with this, that money does not actually go, ever get into the homeowner's hands, per se. It comes to the county, and the county is responsible for making sure the homeowner buys another piece of property with that money. So, usually, it's done through a HUD One form when they're purchasing a new property. So, when there's a closing on this property, they're purchasing another property over here. Some of the stipulations on these, on these funds include, they must stay within the county unless the county signs off on them to leave. If they sign off on them to leave, we still require them to stay within a contiguous county of the county that they live in. Elevations, this is, I believe this is one from Bellhaven, back after Hurricane Floyd. The structure was elevated to get at least a one-foot above freeboard, is how we, or one-foot freeboard, or the local ordinance, whatever the most stringent requirement.
One-foot above base flood.
Right. One-foot freeboard, is what we call it, which is, yes, one-foot above base flood elevation. We are, we've done a lot of these, especially here in Beaufort County, over the years. Beaufort County has absolutely been one of our most reliable and consistent customers of these programs throughout the years. And might I say that Beaufort County also had an IG inspection recently that my understanding is, went very well with their grants management program. This is a new type of project that has recently come, it's kind of new, kind of old. I say that because it started out with Hurricane Katrina and Hurricane Sandy. After Hurricane Sandy, they pulled it, rewrote the guidance, and put it back out recently. We have done one of these projects. It was a Craven County project. But there's a very, I don't want anybody to get this misconstrued, that a mitigation reconstruction is going to build back a million-dollar mansion. It is not going to do such a thing. Total construction cost, including demolition, grading, and grading and site prep, is all $150,000. Total construction cost is $150,000. $25,000 allowed, put it as management, construction management cost, that would be what's considered a soft cost, so for managing the project. And the total project can cost no more than $175,000. Homeowners cannot put their, put additional funds into this project, capped at $175,000, or it's considered a withdrawal or ineligible application. So, it has to stay within the same building footprint. It must be elevated, and it can be, can go no more than 110% of the current square footage. The most you're probably going to get out of this program is maybe a 1,000, 1,200-square-foot house. So, it's not going to be a very large house. It is a good option for those that want to elevate, but the house is not in conditions that it can be elevated. There is a cost-effectiveness review. When we receive letters of interest, LOIs, they're compiled, and we review cost-effectiveness and based on priorities. Cost-effectiveness is a pre-calculated benefits. We can use pre-calculated benefits, which for acquisitions, $276,000 total project cost, or with elevation and mitigation reconstruction, total of $175,000. If we cannot stay within the pre-calculated benefits, then we can also do a benefit-cost analysis. Those pre-calculated benefits are only for those three types of projects. Any other type of project to include a generator must go through a full benefit-cost analysis module, which is available on FEMA's website if you would ever like to download it and give it a shot. If you figure it out, please let me know. I might have a job for you. Once we get that benefit-cost analysis, it gives us a benefit-cost ratio. That ratio must be a 1.0 or above before it's considered an eligible project. The projects also must line up with federal priorities, PDM and FMA. Those are set by the federal government, FEMA in particular, and then state priorities for HMGP. FEMA does not set priorities for HMGP, as long as it stays within the eligibility of the program. This is some of the pieces that we must have to do a, to receive these projects. Homeowner application, model of acknowledgement. Model of acknowledgement, just so everyone knows, that's on elevation or mitigation reconstruction. Must be registered with the deed, and that property must carry flood insurance on it in perpetuity unless it is ever bought out or there's no longer a structure on the property. Rest of it's pretty self-explanatory. The review process for FEMA, we do, the state does a cursory review of the same, but it's a programmatic, meaning it's an eligible project within the program. Benefit-cost analysis and technical review typically done by engineers and benefit-cost analysis specialists. Environmental, historical, preservation, as well as tribal reviews. Any project that's over $1 million goes into a large project notification, and the congressional delegation gets first right at announcing the project before it comes down to be awarded. This process can take anywhere from 60 to 90 days, all the way up to, I've seen, as much as 180 days. Any questions?
I'll have some questions.
Chris?
Are you going to say something?
We'll take his questions.
I guess one of the problems I have with this program, I'm not opposed to anybody that's bought a flood insurance policy, getting all the benefits that go with that policy. They're damaged or harmed. I'm not opposed to them getting the $30,000 of, I think it's called ICC or something, to raise the house. What I'm concerned about is, the whole theory of flood has morphed into another exercise in socialism, and that is, we're out buying houses, building new houses now. We just approved something here, four houses, spending over $100,000 on each house. What about the people that are living up on the hill? And what about the people... And what about the people that have decided to move out of the flood zone? And what are the people that have built above the flood zone so that they're not damaged during a flood? We're giving away...the people that are working and doing what they should be doing, we're giving away a lot of benefit to other people who may not necessarily deserve it. What I see is in recent programs is a rental house that we're spending about $100,000 on. I see a person that probably lives in Georgia and we're spending about $100,000 on that one. I see another pristine property that at the most would be flooded by like one foot of water or two foot based upon the base flood elevation. What I see is a program that I don't necessarily like simply because it's helping people that don't necessarily deserve to be helped. Again, it's morphed into a program where you're telling me that we can spend $175,000 to build somebody a new house just because the house they've been living in is not worth rebuilding. Gee, that to me is not my problem as a taxpayer.
Well, as far as the rebuilding, sir, I didn't say it's not worth rebuilding. I said it's not a thing...it's not able to be elevated. We couldn't elevate it for whatever is not feasible to elevate, whatever that could be.
But that hazard or...in that condition, why should the rest of the taxpayers help people build houses when they've already built their house and paid for it and are paying taxes on it and have bought flood insurance? I mean, I just see a problem that's running off the tracks when compared...when you talk about socialism. I see a very socialistic situation going on here. And so my...one of my questions to you is, how do you qualify people? When I see people that probably live out of state and I see a rental house and all this sort of stuff, how are we justifying this? Why are we putting money into these people's pockets?
Well, I'm not exactly sure of the two specific properties that you're talking about, but we qualify them as, depending on what program it is, if it's a severe repetitive loss program...if it's a severe repetitive loss house, then we're losing money on it even at the insurance level nationwide with the flood insurance program. So it's more cost effective for us to elevate the house, whether it's a rental property or a personal property, than it is to keep paying out the claims on the personal...the personal property claims or the...
But no other...this...see FEMA is owned by the federal government. It should have been privatized 10 years ago. No other insurance company pays you for repetitive losses. They'll pay you for one car being destroyed one time. That's all. The fact that you have repetitive losses tells you that somebody should...has had plenty of time to do something about their condition, but because we're nice guys, we're going to take these taxpayers' money over here and we're going to use it for somebody that won't help themselves. We've drifted into a situation where repetitive losses shouldn't be. There's even been talk by congressmen that we may not be paying repetitive losses anymore. And we probably shouldn't pay repetitive losses, but maybe two times, then it's up to you to fix it. Why should we keep paying repetitive losses? And gee, because we're going to save money, now we're just going to build you a new house. That doesn't make a lick of sense to the guy that's sitting out here with three children, working every day, paying his taxes, and doing what he can to look after his family. And that's the...that's why I raised this issue on this. The flood program has become a socialist program.
Question.
Yes, sir.
And this question may be directed towards you or Anita, you may know. The program is funded by the federal government. Money is passed through Beaufort County. Does Beaufort County pay any money upfront for these renovations? And if so, how long does it take before those renovation...that renovation money is returned?
I can answer that.
To Beaufort County?
Okay. So, no, yes. Beaufort County has to pay upfront. This is a reimbursement program. This is not a...
Reimbursement?
Yes, sir. It's a reimbursement. We will reimburse anything over $500. So if you have an expense, every $500, you can submit a cost report and we will...which includes receipts to make sure all of the line items are eligible. And then we'll...once we review it, we'll pay the...pay the cost report.
My follow-up question would be...or questions would be two. Number one, how long is it before Beaufort County receives the money after...in reimbursement? After the...it has been submitted to your agency?
In the past and with some of the programs or some of the previous funding stream years, we have...it's been taken around two months.
Two months.
We are now moving into it where it's taken about two weeks. We've bought some software that we are running all these grants through. We purchased the software and the local governments have access to it. The sub recipients have access to the program and they upload their receipts into it, hit submit, comes to my grants managers. They review it, send it to me. I review it, hit submit, and then it goes over to our fiscal section and they pay it. So it's...it could take as less...as little as a week. It could take as much as two to three weeks. But we're trying to expedite the process.
My second question is, of the funds that have been funded by Beaufort County, is 100% of that money reimbursed to Beaufort County or is there some monies that are not repaid?
Over the years, I'm not entirely sure on that.
100% reimbursed.
Our historical evidence is 100%.
There might be some owner contribution involved, but no county money.
If there's a...if there's a lesson, if there's a lessening, then the homeowner has to kick in that amount?
Yeah, as the cost share.
Yes.
Sounds like the county makes the homeowner kick in.
Yes.
Okay. And we collect 100%?
100%.
Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioners, we'd like to thank Ryan and Charles Tripp, our area coordinator, for coming out tonight and providing this information on the various funds that are available to us as a county. What we ask for tonight is that if any of these things are of interest to the committee, we ask for your approval to allow us to submit a interest letter on behalf of the county. Thank you.
For your fourth and final presentation of the evening, I have joining me here this evening, Andy Hundecut, which I believe most of you remember. He's been with us numerous times before to discuss the AMI project implementation, which again, as a refresher, AMI is advanced metering infrastructure. So this is currently a capital project that's being undertaken by the Beaufort County Water Department. In essence, this is a installation or meter replacement project where we are installing meters that will be ready to read, that will transmit to antennas located throughout the county, and then we will be able to have those readings back in our office. So we're trying to automate a very labor intensive and a very costly process in order to get our readings for our meters on a monthly basis. And MeterSys, we have hired MeterSys. They are functioning as the project manager for Beaufort County Water Department during this project, so I'll turn it over to Andy so he can hear what they say.
Thank you, Christina. The county manager encouraged us to make sure we briefed the county board of commissioners ahead of engaging the customers, and that's what we're here to do. And so thank you for that offer and hopefully we're...we'll succinctly share with you where the project is and where we're headed. The project's actually being led by Lauren Brown with MeterSys. Lauren is very skilled. She's in the audience. Having managed multiple projects in this technology, in this specific vendor's technology. So we're real fortunate that Lauren can continue that expertise and that experience with Beaufort County. We understand the technology by this vendor and by the implementation team, and therefore we will...things will be much more predictable and manageable for sure. One of the things that we're proud to say is since the third quarter of 2018, when you authorized the project, there's been a lot of preparatory work that has gone in to make sure that we roll this out effectively. You authorized it in July, and since that time, we've been working through multiple phases of setup. That's equipment ordering and subcontractor arrangements and getting everybody ready to roll. And at this point, we are on schedule. We will be testing the network through February. All 12 locations and 14 base stations across your county, and you're very fortunate to have infrastructure where we didn't have to build any new elevated assets. Because you've covered this town in its totality on the water system side, we can use those existing assets and save a heck of a lot of money on the infrastructure. So that infrastructure will be tested in February, and we will also be testing our software interface with the utility billing system and rolling in limited production. And what I mean by that is limited installation. We actually will start in district...on the north side. It's the largest section in districts three and four. And then we'll go by geography within the north side until we complete it. Now, why that's important is because resources within Beaufort County on meter reading side are constrained. And I think there's continued struggle in getting the work done each and every month. So the best approach forward is to get our network in totality up and operational and install meters and begin offloading that work for your existing resources. And so that will be done throughout 19, and then we'll be in full deployment by April of this year and hope to conclude installation by 2020, March of 2020. And then there will be a lot of work on the backside, making sure that we have the system configured right, training is done effectively, and that you operate this system with sustainability. The key tasks to date include getting all of the thousands of pieces of equipment, meters and radios installed and ordered, and they are on site here in Beaufort County, ready for implementation. The 14 base stations have been installed and the welding and all the prefab work that has to be done has been complete, and the installers are actually, if not here in town, they're on their way. And we'll start that COAX or the base station to antenna installation over the next several days. We have conducted signal strengths testing to make sure that the modems are reporting that data and getting that data out of the base stations and where they need to be. And we've got the test meters installed throughout the county. There are about 25 of those. They're dispersed throughout the county to make sure we have good coverage, and those will be brought online in the coming weeks. Still have a little bit of work to do on the base stations in terms of the electrical side. It has been extraordinarily wet. That has been the only unpredictable element in this project so far is managing the weather, but certainly we'll work through that. Customer communication. There are three aspects of this project, and you know those...what those aspects are. We need to bill customers correctly. You've got aged infrastructure. It's under registering consumption. And so the first and foremost thing is to bill what is being consumed by the customer. The second is to improve efficiency within your operations, so offloading the things you can't manually...you can't manually offload and automating the things you can. Third, and the most important, is the customer engagement. So how are we involving...in engaging our customers in improving the quality of service and the level of data access and information that customers will see? And we will do that through effective communication and being responsive. You see the form on the right. That is a door hanger that will be given to every installed customer, and there is a 1-800 number that customers can call, and it is monitored daily. So if a customer has questions, rather than inundating your office, we go to a Ferguson managed hotline, so to speak, where those calls will be responded to and information will be shared. So we believe in effective communication, and we'll be working with Christina and Eric and Brian and others in the coming weeks to finalize the key messaging and all of the channels for communication to make sure that no one in Beaufort County is unaware of the project or its influences. The folks in the field will be very visible in terms of decals and safety vests and ID cards. They will carry a information sheet. They will not engage customers directly. The best thing to do is give factual information to the customer and let the customer then call or engage us with other questions. And then door hangers will be provided on every installed meter so that they know what happened and if there's some murky water, if there's air in the line, and there shouldn't be, but if there is, that they know that there's a reason for that and how to remedy. Upcoming milestones, we'll be working more on the software to get the interfaces done with your utility billing system. We will have those test meters in the ground commissioned and tested by the end of the month, and then we will start the mass meter installation in a ramp up environment by early February, as I said, in districts three and four. I think that's coming. Any questions?
I did a lot of work on helping put this together with Christina's help, and a question just come to mind when you started talking about the antennas and the reading of them and things of that nature. When you don't install a meter and then test that meter, how does the water flow after you put that meter in without a test?
It's just...we disrupt water service about five minutes. It is literally the amount that would normally be required. So when we remove the old meter, we're going to record data, the last read, the asset information like the meter ID, then we pull that meter out and replace it with a new. And once that meter is activated, we go and open up a spigot or something that is accessible to flush the line, and then we go back and while that's occurring, we're going back and testing the radio, making sure it's got good signal strength, it's connecting to the base station, and all that's occurring so that when we leave that location, it is operable and fully disinfected. So disruption about five minutes. For any commercial accounts, industrials, we will coordinate that through appointment, and so they will never see a situation or should never see a situation where water is disconnected or service is discontinued that would impact their operation. And I should say on the residential side, that they will do a knock at the door to let the customer know that water is going to be terminated for a short period of time, and we will do advanced communication so that as a population, that particular region has gotten notification.
Yes, sir.
One question.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm new to the board.
Yes, sir.
I'm brand new. I'm not familiar with this whole package, this whole plan, but I do have a few questions. What you're offering is the service, the hardware and the software, right?
Right.
Okay. Anything else that you're offering?
And when you say you, is it...
You're a corporation.
So our company is simply an advocate and an arms-length partner to the county to make sure the vendor, the implementer does like it should. We do not sell equipment. We do not...
Oh, okay.
We have no connection with any of the manufacturers.
You're not the salesman or anything like that. You're just a consultant.
We are the...we are the project manager.
Project manager. Okay. Very well. Well, let me ask you this question. You probably can answer it as well. The hardware costs a certain amount of money.
Right.
Software costs a certain amount of money. Hardware is in place. What's the life of the hardware?
It's 20-year warranty. So it's got a full 10-year warranty, and then it's prorated each and every year for 20 years. And did Ferguson just change that or Census, excuse me? It's now 25 years.
25 years?
That's a recent change, which is...
And the software is updated on a how regular a basis?
As long as you're engaging in the license agreement with...
Yes.
With Census. All the firmware updates and software updates are provided at no additional charge.
In perpetuity?
For the life of the contract.
How long's the contract?
So that it should be...do you know what the ELO says currently? I think it's on an annual renewal basis.
Annual renewal basis. Covered in maintenance every year. And it's posted.
Okay. So we just got to say, we want to do it every year, and you say, "Thank you." Okay. We're cool. Your incentive is to keep us happy, right?
And the...
Do we have a clawback if you don't keep us happy?
There is language in there.
Okay.
One of the things about having an annual renewal is there are third-party software systems that can do the same thing as the manufacturer's software, and that gives the county flexibility if you're not satisfied to not renew that contract and redirect.
Okay. So the latest software, whatever, within our needs, we should be fulfilled in that regard, and therefore the signals should work. We should not have a busted interface. We should not have a busted interface, so to speak.
Your point's an excellent one. The industry historically has acquired third-party software providers and then kind of shoehorned the software into their infrastructure. In the case of this particular vendor, Census, which is owned by Xylem, they're a worldwide billion-dollar company. Census built the software in-house to marry to its infrastructure. And so it is cutting-edge, I would say, will say.
Proprietary for this group?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And could be updated as per what codes need to be implemented?
Correct. And we see continual version updates all the time.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Honeck.
Thank you.
I have a question. Hang on one second. Yes, sir. Goodness me. What's the annual renewal fee?
I can get that to you. I don't have it off the top of my head. Lauren may have it in her contract document.
It's... Do you have it?
I mean, I can...
Oh, okay. Well, we'll go ahead while you're looking up then, if that's all right.
That's the only question I had.
Okay.
Go down.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Moving to items for consent. Kelly Smith.
No, I'm just closing out.
Mr. Chairman, you take those as a whole?
As a whole?
Yes.
You know, Kelly won't find it.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the items for consent.
Second. Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull item four, Budget Amendment and Capital Project Ordinance, and the enlarged planning board appointment, City of Washington. I have a couple of questions about those. Wherever you'd like to move them to. Number four and number nine.
Let's move both of them underneath number 10 so we can go in and discuss some of the people here.
Okay. Yes.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Sanita?
Sir?
Forty-five. Well, let me get my question.
Number four.
The budget amendment.
Yeah. Forty-five. Is the budget amendment, you snuck up on me with that, capital project for the Division of Coastal Management? All right. We're going to have to put $5,000 with this, right?
Yes.
Why do we need this?
This was the project that the board approved back in September.
Yeah.
It is to do a study on the Wrights Creek property, the entire property, to ensure that there's no issues with the erosion out there and to provide for, to put a plan together if there's a need to be able to go back for funding in the state if needed.
Okay. There are, in fact, issues with erosion, aren't there?
There are some issues on the canal side that have occurred over the years. There's some vegetation that's fallen down. It looks like there's some issues there, and that's what this is going to help us look at and...
This last hurricane took out the dike, didn't it? Keep in mind, I've been familiar with this property for 10 years.
Took out which dike?
Took out a part of the containment dike or the dredge material.
Not aware of that.
Well, you need to go down there and look at it because it's what has happened to this property is just what I said was going to happen to it. When the hurricane lined up on it, it's going to do some damage. And if another one lines up on it, it's going to be a whole lot more damage done to our $400,000 piece of property.
Mr. Chairman. I asked Brian to go down there and meet me, and we took a look at the property back, I guess maybe it was June or July. There's not a dike right out there at that point. I mean, it was all natural. You know, there was not even any rocks up there. And it has, I think, you know, probably three trees have fallen over.
No, more than three trees. More than three trees. I was there two weeks ago. I've got photographs.
Well, I think this...
You're getting into a hazardous situation with this, which is the reason I vote against buying this property to begin with.
Well, I think what we're trying to do now is figure out what we need to do to stabilize that point out there.
That's right. Stabilizing the point is a good way to describe it. And there's some other erosion on the side, on the other side, on the creek over there. It's going to be a problem if something's not done about it because the pines are beginning to fall there, too. That was the reason that I brought this up, was to point out the purpose.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the...
Second.
Budget amendment.
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, we're ready to go to number nine. Katie?
What's the question? Well, my question there is, if the board approved this appointment back a couple of months ago, why does it have to come back for another appointment approval?
This is for the City of Washington.
Not Bath.
They're actually appointing a person to it. They're asking for your...
Oh, you're saying we approved Bath the last time? Is that right? Not the City of Washington. All right. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? We're going to take, if we hit seven o'clock hour, we're going to take a short break. We'll be right back. Yes, sir. We're back from break. Items for discussion. Commissioner Richardson.
Oh, okay. Probably got flood maps. Well, what I'll do is my standard thing. I'm going to say two things. We got about $5 million in flood insurance premiums in Beaufort County that can go into the citizens' pockets as soon as we can get these maps approved. I know one guy that's paying $4,900 a year for flood insurance. Guess what happens when these maps are approved? He's out of the floodplain. He doesn't have to pay anything. And if he wants flood insurance for about $500 bucks, he can get a preferred risk policy. So this is a big deal for Beaufort County, and we need to be a lot more aggressive than we have been in this because the federal government and the state government is doing nothing but dragging their heels on this project. This could have been approved in 2013 because it was 1913 flood event is what all this was based on. So the 100 years came about in 2013, 2013 to 2014. We're six years behind on this. So I'm going to ask the manager, I see he's ready, to give us his report on why we don't have this done.
Members of the board, I had another conversation with Randy Munt, who is the outreach coordinator for the Risk Management Section of North Carolina Department of Public Safety that handles the flood map revisions. The comment period, the formal comment period, the second formal comment period, they came about after some revisions that were made last year that occurred because of the first comment period. They had to go into a second, they had to have revisions, and they had to have another comment period, another formal comment period. That comment period closed December the 30th of 18. There were no comments that were received regarding those revisions, and the state of North Carolina has submitted a formal request to the federal government, FEMA, for the letter of final determination. Mr. Munt says that that could take three to four months to be returned. There is then the six-month statutory period for which it has to be held open, which allows local governments to get their ordinances correct and in effect and gives everybody time to get everything straight before it becomes effective. What he did say was, based on the current federal government shutdown, he did not know what that timeframe may look like. That may push that out a little bit. So, but the letter from the state of North Carolina has been submitted to FEMA requesting the letter of final determination for those maps.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item number two, Warehouse Operations.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to read a little bit of this and some stuff I've written. I'll try to talk it out, too. Just want to make sure I get it right. Warehouser, over the years, has been a leading timber producer in northeastern North Carolina. They have also been a corporate leader in our state in dressing timber, that timber being used for a variety of purposes, not least of which pulp and building materials. What has happened over the years, and I'm not clear on how it happened, all I'm clear on is that it did happen, is that Warehouser in northeastern North Carolina has achieved a regional corporate monopoly. It is known by every timber producer, every timber farmer. It is known by every timber harvester in northeastern North Carolina. And the upshot is that, over the years, other lumber mills have gone out of business. With other lumber mills going out of business, there's a lack of competition for the timber producers to get a fair price for their timber. That's just not happening right now in northeastern North Carolina. Give you a case in point. I use myself as an example. Last year, May, and it was no design of my own that I got my timber cut at the highest timber futures have ever been, running around $600. I got my timber cut at that time, really. The reason being, I got my timber cut at that time, is I had trouble getting it cut, and that just happened to be the time that they could cut my timber. Be that as it may, with timber futures the highest they've ever been, I got less, half of what I had gotten for pulp just seven or eight years earlier. I'm not accounting for any kind of inflation or deflation with the time period, but I got half. Case in point, well, let me tell you, I got, my stumpage was $11 per cord, which is 5,400 pounds of timber. It's about 43, 44% in weight of what a thousand board feet is. I have, my wife has a very good friend whose husband owns a timber mill in southeastern Virginia, not far from here, but too far to ship your timber. Let's face it, the reason being, you cannot put timber on the road is twofold. Number one, more gas. Number two, more time. Like number three, for the timber harvester, more wear and tear on his truck, but he's got to get that guy back. So that's why, one of the major contributing factors, there is this corporate monopoly and why you can't just send your timber anywhere, especially for pulp. At this mill in southeastern Virginia, southeastern central Virginia, it's pretty much just north of Roanoke Rapids, he was paying 145% more for the same amount of weight for pulp than I was getting the same week. That's exactly what he paid his people. And he made money. He made a lot of money. Now, I'm not asking you guys to get on, you know, go and weep for Stan, but I'm going to ask you to stand up for all the people who harve, I mean, manage timber, farm timber here in Beaufort County, all of the timber harvesters that we have here in Beaufort County who are barely making it. And even the timber brokers are getting a lot less. There's things that we can do to send a message to Warehouser. And I'm not saying we send a resolution to the DOJ. I mean, I don't think it would make any difference because this is just a regional perspective. This is not anything that I know of happening on a national level. But this is happening in Beaufort County. When you see big loads of timber going down the road in Beaufort County, going outside of Beaufort County, just know that that money on that timber is going into pockets of Warehouser and not in the pockets of the people who live here, the people who own the land, pay the taxes, and grow the timber. It is not going in the pockets of the timber harvesters. They're barely scraping by. If you talk to any of them, they will tell you that. I talked to one the other few months ago, and I said, "Tell me, what's your opinion about Warehouser?" And he said something I can't say totally, but he called them those thieving blanks. And he meant it, and he was angry because he has a hard time making his payroll. What I'm asking you is to consider this, and consider this, as we go into budget and we look at where our expenditures are and where our receipts are, we need to think about who gets present use in this county and who doesn't get present use, and to what extent we can affect that and to what extent we can ask Raleigh for a local bill if necessary. And maybe other counties in northeastern North Carolina will follow suit. You understand that northeastern North Carolina, I keep saying it's a regional thing, it's a northeastern thing. If you look at North Carolina, we're stuck way out to the east. It's hard for us to send a product that is heavy and it takes time to ship it and get it back. It's hard to get that to places where you can have a fair and free market. Okay? Right now, we don't have a free and fair market. And I'll be honest with you, if it wasn't for J.W. Jones Log, logging company up in Elizabeth City, I would have lost my butt. I made money only because there was a timber producer, no, excuse me, a timber dresser, a timber mill up in Elizabeth City, and the logs were good enough quality, you could afford to ship it all the way up there. I got a fair price. My harvester made money. My broker made money. We all made money. But when it came to number-two logs, chip and saw, and pulp, we didn't make any money. Are you talking about chips? There are no chips anymore. Landowner doesn't get any money on chips, and barely, barely does a harvester make any money. So what I'm asking you is to be aware of this, that the public be aware of this, and the public understand that this is a problem. If you go to sell your timber, you're going to get, if Warehouser buys your timber, you're going to probably get about two and a half times less than what you would get if somebody else bought your timber. And it has nothing to do with what the timber futures are, nothing whatsoever. This is not a free market. It is not a fair market. It is a regional corporate monopoly, and the boys in Washington that own Warehouser are making all the money. And think about it. There's no plant, Warehouser plant here in Beaufort County, we're not going to lose a thing if we take action. Something we need to think about, and I'm asking you to consider it. It's nothing we need to do tonight, but it's something we need to be aware of. With that, I'm finished.
I'd like to make a comment on what you said. I've cut a lot of timber over a period of my life. Back in 2006, we were getting $175 to $200 a thousand board feet for lumber. You know what it is now? $33 a thousand foot. So that's how much it's going down, and that's, I don't know how these loggers are making it. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you.
Yeah.
And I think we all realize that Warehouser is the number-two taxpayer in Beaufort County. So it's an important part of it.
Yes, it is. I'd like for it to be number-one taxpayer in Beaufort County.
Would you like to make a resolution?
Yeah. During the presentation of the gentleman standing here during the mitigation, about the mitigation plan, we've omitted to make the resolution. If there's, he said if there's ever any monies that Beaufort County want to apply for, that we could make the resolutions. And I'm going to make a motion tonight that we submit that resolution if there are any monies out there available for the citizens of Beaufort County, the residents of Beaufort County, that we give our people the authority to apply for those funds.
I'll second that.
Well, my comment is they've always had the authority. They've always brought it into us.
Well, that's fair enough.
Too, so, you know.
I got you.
They can come in and apply for anything.
You want discussion?
So I'm not going to vote for the resolution because of that, because they can do it anyway.
I'll make a discussion point here. I agree with Commissioner Richardson wholeheartedly that we have a problem in the United States with the FEMA application of the floodplain, I mean, not floodplain, the floodplains program. We are, as taxpayers, are subsidizing it at a record rate. It's going up every year, and it's unsustainable mathematically. And at some point, we politicians at all levels, even this local level, we need to ask that this be managed better. There are places where people should not build. They just simply should not build. And if you continue to reward the behavior of building in these places where they should not build, they're going to continue to do it, and then they're going to scream bloody murder when the money's not there anymore. And at some point, it won't be there anymore. Having said all this, understanding that, I was told tonight that we get our money back within two months to two weeks, and we have 100% success rate in getting all our money back, I will vote for it because it is money out there, and we need to do what we can to get that money. And at some point, we, we politicians, at all levels, even this local level, we're, we need to, we need to ask that this be managed better. There are places where people should not build, they just simply should not build. And if you continue to reward the behavior of building in these places where they should not build, they're gonna continue to do it. And then they're gonna scream bloody murder when the money's not there anymore. And at some point, it won't be there anymore. Having said all this, understanding that, I was told tonight, that we get our money back within two months to two weeks, and we have 100% success rate in getting all our money back, I will vote for it, because it is money out there, and we need to do what we can to get that money, even though I do not support the program. I know that's hypocritical, but it's, I've, I've been a commissioner for 18 years, and as many, I hold my nose and vote for things every now and then, this might be one of those times I'd do it.
All those in favor?
I've got a comment. Is there any way that we can restrict, so that we don't end up with a piece of vacant property deeded to the county? I really have no problems elevating the home and keeping it on the tax book. My problem is, is you, you get a piece of property between Bath and Bellhaven, that's, that's an acre?
There are situations that could be worked out for that, upfront, to understand that the county would not be continuing to maintain that property, such as cutting the grass. There's other things that can be done with that property, if that's answering your question, Commissioner.
But the county is gonna, it's gonna be deeded to the county?
Yes.
There, we, why, why can't the program divide the property and deed it to the adjoining landowners?
Well, there's no prohibition against that, you can do that. And some properties have been sold, and people...
You cannot. Let, let, let...
But as long as, as long as the perpetual, no bill stays on it, you, you can.
The, the rule from FEMA, we had this conversation with the folks when we went to DC, is that it has to stay in perpetuity in either local government or a land conservation group, so that it stays, and you can't...
Really? They've changed it. That's dumb. I ain't voting for something like that.
You can't, you can't give it, you can't give it to a person, or you can't buy it from, a person can't buy it, because if you were to buy it, you'd wanna build something on it. You'd wanna put something on it.
No, but it's got, it's got a perpetual restriction on it, and stays there forever.
Right. But you, but it has to stay in ownership of either local government, or you can transfer to a, to a land conservation group, or some group, a, a nonprofit group that's responsible for doing land conservation.
So, we can deed it to a conservation group?
Yes, but your question is, does it come off the, the tax rolls? And yes, it comes off the tax rolls. That, that, that is true. It does do that.
No, really, my question is, we can't deed it to the adjoining landowners.
No.
He says not, at one time you could.
You, you could work a deal out, and, and we have some of those properties now, where adjoining landowners have said to us, "I'd like to put a garden out there, or I'd like to just have it as a buffer." And we say, "Okay, well, you can use it, you just gotta cut the grass on and keep it up." So, we have some of those MOUs on some of those pieces of property. But as to putting it in someone else's name, besides a local government or a conservation agency, you cannot do that.
I'm not voting for something like that. That's dumb. Can it go directly to the conservation group, or does it have to go through the county first, and then...
It has, it's, it's just how the government is set up, federal government to, to the county government or local municipality. It has to go, go to a local government first, and then the county, in this case, could decide to deed that over, under that, that particular program, which Manager Ali Good is saying. Also, it could be leased to the adjoining property owner for a dollar a year, or some type of agreement that way, for them to maintain. So, there are ways to make sure the county is not having to maintain the property, or the, it could just be left to, to grow, to be...
As long as you don't build a house on it.
That's correct. You, you could never build on it.
I, I understand. I understand.
But also, let, let's, let's also be very, very clear, that when the Board of Commissioners takes an action relating to this, they are taking an action related to the unincorporated areas of Beaufort County. Local governments within Beaufort County municipalities have the ability to apply for this program and do that. Just because the Board of Commissioners says, "We don't wanna do it," it doesn't keep the municipalities from applying. So, there's been some misinformation that's been put out there, that has essentially blamed the Board of Commissioners for not being able to do something. If you are in a jurisdiction, because you cannot, you cannot go into another jurisdiction without their approval. You can't go do things in, in a municipality without them saying, "Okay." So, when, if, when you make judgments about this, you are acting on behalf of the citizens who are in the unincorporated areas of Beaufort County.
Any more comments?
I have a specific question, once you complete your action, I guess.
We ready to vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
If, I just wanted to be specific from your motion, uh, just for our office, to make sure we're, we're doing what we're supposed to. Currently, there are funds that are, that are possibly available, uh, but it has a, for us to submit a letter of interest. All that does is puts us in, in the pot. And then, when we see anything from that, we have to bring everything back to the Board for approval as we move forward, but I wanna make sure we're good with that.
Let me say one thing.
Yes, sir.
If, if you bring it back, and I find that there's a chance we have to wait a year, two years for our money, and there's not 100% chance we're not gonna get that money back.
Right.
I mean, money's tight in Beaufort County right now, with the taxes going up like they have, I will vote against it.
I understand. And I would like to make one other comment. I, I know we're saying we don't, I've heard, not me personally, but some have said they don't want their tax money going towards this.
I agree with that.
This is money, though, that the government has already allocated. Your tax, our taxes have already gone to it, it's just a matter of where it's gonna end up now. That's already been...
But, but we are protracted nuisance to ask for.
Yes, sir.
But, I mean, I, see, that's the part I hate, that's why I have to ho, hold my nose to vote for it.
Well, I'm glad you hear your nose.
Ain't searching, listen, great.
I'll do that again.
I have a decision.
Take your money and help somebody in.
Kathy Smith?
Glad you hear your nose.
I had to hold my nose, man.
You're...
Good evening, Commissioners. I come to you tonight, um, and we've also been in consultation with the Human Resources manager here in Beaufort County, and we're requesting the reclassification of two physicians. Both of those physicians are currently an income maintenance caseworker two, and we are requesting that they be downgraded to a processing assistant four. One of the positions is currently vacant, and the other is filled by career status employee. The duties assigned to these physicians within the triage unit at DSS do not meet the responsibilities needed to satisfy the classification of an income maintenance caseworker two. An income maintenance caseworker two is responsible for determining Medicaid eligibility, and these positions do not determine that eligibility. These positions are used to coordinate Medicaid transportation. The duties of this position do satisfy the classification requirements for processing assistant four. The classification downgrades have been approved by the Office of State Human Resources. This request is a small cost savings to the county. Income maintenance caseworker two is currently a pay grade 12, and is budgeted with salary and benefits at $42,414. And the processing assistant is a pay grade 10, which is budgeted at $38,753 salary and benefits. The vacant position, if approved, will be filled at that pay grade 10, which will be the cost savings, and the occupied position will remain with the same salary and benefits, but is still within that range of a pay grade two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a question. The people that are doing these jobs, nothing against the people, but do, I understand that the job consists of scheduling Medicaid patients for pickup and delivery.
Yes, that is true, that is part of their...
Part of what they do.
Part of what they do.
What is the rest of what they do?
Well, that program does receive such a high call, volume, and visit, that that is mainly what they do. They also coordinate with doctors' offices when needed.
Do Medicaid, all Medicaid, are Medicaid recipients required to use this service?
No, no.
But we provide the service to people who want it?
If they're Medicaid eligible, yes, sir.
Why?
Because that's the part of the Medicaid program, we have to offer, uh, non-emergency medical transportation if a person receives Medicaid.
Is that mandated by the state?
Yes. It comes down from the federal, federal government, though.
But you have to volunteer to get you guys to help. In other words, not everybody uses your service.
That's correct.
That's on Medicaid.
That's correct.
So, is there a particular category of users?
Such as?
Well, people who are invalids and can't get out of the house at all, or people who...
It's an all range, from all ranges, doctor's appointments, just for a checkup, to somebody who maybe, uh, needs a, in a wheelchair, and has to go to Duke or Greenville for some type of medical appointment.
And we work with, like, the taxi services, and the transporters, and everybody else?
Yes. And there are policies and procedures, they, they must use the closest provider unless there's, um, extenuating circumstances, um, which requires a note. There's policies and procedures, they can't just pick somebody, you know, in Asheville.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Questions? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mercer.
Chairman, Commissioners, I appreciate you guys letting me present tonight. We're here for the second reading of the North State Medical Transport Franchise, and hopefully your approval tonight for the operating in the Beaufort County EMS system. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to field those. I've got the Vice President here, Mr. Richard Hardig, that's a Beaufort County resident, if you'd like to ask him any questions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor? All opposed?
Start the hall, then.
Christina?
Once again, I'll speak about mitigation. This is a project that I think we're all very excited about. Do you recall, a few months ago, we did receive grant funding from the Golden Leaf Foundation to partially fund, uh, the installation of generators on the north side of the river for our water system? So, what I bring before you today is a recommendation to award. McDavid and Associates has completed the design of two generators, one which will be installed at the Washington Water Treatment Plant Booster Pump Station, and the second one, which will be installed at the Slate Stone Booster Pump Station, 350 KW and a 150KW. They've completed the design, put the project out to bid. We received several bids, they were received on December 20th of 2018. The low bidder is Wiltson Roads Electric of Greenville, North Carolina, and McDavid and Associates presents before you a recommendation to award the contract in the amount of $326,100, which, again, is within the project budget and within the grant funds that we have been awarded by the Golden Leaf Foundation.
Motion to approve. Second. Discussion?
Is there any contingency, how does, can the contingency apply to this?
Yes, sir, included within the project budget.
And why are you looking, see if any change orders in it?
There's currently, within the project budget, there's $34,000 worth of contingent.
And that's not included in the bid, that's still there. Okay, great, I'm ready.
All in favor, where you're at? All opposed?
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Well, there's been, been a recent controversy having to do with, uh, what the state pays, and I think we're on, we're on the state medical plan, aren't we? We're, Beaufort County is a part of this, uh, pays for medical plan service. I believe it's still administered by Blue Cross, uh, and this gets to be a real financial zigzag game. Fortunately, we have a very aggressive and conservative, uh, state treasurer, Dale Folwell. And he has looked into this and decided that just mailing somebody a bill and them writing a check for it is not the way to do business, because apparently, that's what's going on. We don't, the state medical plan really doesn't know what they're paying for, or how many times they're paying for. There's an opportunity for a lot of fraud here. There is a lot of inefficiency in the medical system, now that we have been obminized. And that is another problem. And you have to find a way to try to get some competition back into it to get prices down. Folwell thinks that he has the right to tell the people that are supposed to be administering this, to, this for us, "Hey, you need to put, at least put on the invoice what you did for the guy, uh, and, and what services were provided, so that we can do some audits to see how much abuse is going on within the system." So, this, getting those prices down, and letting Folwell do his job. Now, there's an effort, Viden, one of the most inefficiently run hospitals in the world, is, has, has got a program going of trying to lobby people, uh, to, to, for the legislature to get Folwell out of this, to order him out of it, and so that he won't be doing his job. There's a lot of lobbying going on with this, because there's a lot of money for hospitals to make. And if, if, if costs are tightened up, and there's audits, then hospitals have to become more efficient. That means your cost gets lowered, that means our taxes get lowered, that means the individual out here that's having to pay for medical insurance on his own stands an opportunity to pay less. So, everybody comes out ahead with this game. I don't really understand why people are getting taken in by Viden, who are just screaming, "Put everybody on Obamacare, and keep paying us, so we can all make our big salaries, and we don't care about the rest of it." When, when money gets limited, people have to start getting innovative about how to manage and reduce costs. That's the whole purpose that's behind my short resolution here. Bid resolved, Beaufort County Board of Commissioners supports state treasurer Folwell's efforts to lower the state medical plan insurance cost. That's the motion.
Second. Discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
All right. I oppose the resolution. Based on the numbers I've seen, it would affect the system in eastern North Carolina to the tune of $40 million. And that would definitely have an impact on Viden Beaufort Hospital, as well as Viden in Greenville. So, I will oppose, uh, this resolution.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I speak?
Yes.
I've talked a lot tonight about, uh, corporate monopolies. Talked a lot tonight about, um, mismanagement of funds, and mathematical, certainly, that we're, we're not gonna be able to continue, if we keep going the way we're going. Now, I, I have to differ you hood on one thing. You said Obamacare has created a, a bigger mess, I mean, a mess. It's created a bigger mess, but there was a mess before Obamacare. In the medical field, it has always never been a, a pure, open market. It's just not set up that way. There's always been certificate of needs, where, uh, certain areas could, could, could benefit and, and sustain themselves to have a hospital. We're, we're way past that now, with helicopters and, and transports. We don't even need certificate of need anymore, but in North Carolina, we've got it. We've got a treasurer who's asking that there be some itemization, so that with all the software we have now, that we could start figuring out where the costs are, and how can we save? We can save at, at the state level, and maybe, who knows? Maybe that will be a, a, a model system for other companies to save, and would force these medical, uh, practices, these hospitals, to become efficient. Viden, local Viden in Beaufort County is one of the most inefficient, inefficiently run hospitals in, in northeastern North Carolina. Give you a case in point.
Please.
Okay. I gave you a case in point about timber, let me give you a case in point here. Last year, I, I had to have surgery on an eye. I had to have a, the cloud removed, so I could have a lens put on my eye. And to do that, I, I got all the doctors to give me a price. The doc, local doctors were the same as the ones in Greenville, there's no difference. But to have that same process done, here in, at Viden Beaufort, it was gonna cost three and a half, half times more than to have it done in Greenville at Viden Surgical Center. Still Viden, but Viden Beaufort, eight and a half thousand dollars. Viden Surgical Center, $2,000, plus they financed. So, why is it three and a half times more here in Beaufort County than it is in Greenville? I'll tell you why. There's a market over there. Even though Viden owns a lot of what's going on over there, there's still non-Viden-owned businesses, and so therefore, there is a freer market than we have here. I'm not saying it is a perfect market, it certainly isn't, but there's a freer market. Whatever we can do to make the public aware of what's going on, we will all benefit. The problem is, yes, insurance companies should not be able to set these extremely high rates, and hospitals be inefficient, inefficient, and doctors charge too much when less can be charged. That's what's happening with Obamacare, and that's what's forcing the interest rate, I mean, the insurance rates higher and higher. Insurance companies are making, some insurance companies, not all of them, just the ones that are favored by Obamacare, are making fabulous amount of monies right now. They're, they're in for the whole program. And there are people in between the poor, who are on Medicaid, and are getting the really great Obamacare deals, and the folks that are working for companies, that, that have their own plan. The people in between are getting to the point now, they can't even afford insurance anymore, and they're, they're making a, a decent living, but they can't afford... anymore, and they're making a decent living, but they can't afford insurance. It's going to have to come out of pocket. God forbid they ever have a situation where they go bankrupt because of that. But what I'm trying to say is, we cannot sustain ourselves mathematically if we don't do something about the medical industry. Hood?
Well, I like just two sentences when you.
I'm done.
Everybody's done.
I'll say this, as far as efficiency goes, Blue Cross last year lowered rates 9% in the Piedmont and raised rates 9% in eastern North Carolina. And they said the reason was because they had competition in the Piedmont, and rates were lower, and they didn't have competition, and they had bad management in the east, so they raised your Blue Cross rates. This will help everybody if this thing goes through. Frankie saving $40 million to help the local buds and keep them in business, because we their buddies, that's not the way the business world works. That is screwing the public big time. Excuse my French.
Okay, let's vote. All of those four? All opposed? Mr. Richardson, Sheriff's Office of State.
Oh, yeah. Well, the sheriff's office, we're coming up on budget, and we need to do some comparables on the sheriff's office with other sheriff's offices of similar size, similar populations, and I'm proposing that we find a way to initiate a study to make these comparables. And I want an independent agency, person, firm, whatever you pick to do it. I don't want a bunch of law enforcement officers doing it, because they're all insiders. And that's, it's that simple. And this is for use in the budget that's coming up this year. The study would show the staffing per capita, as an example, and it would show the office organizations and the amount of overhead that goes into these, into budgets, that goes into these. Take 10 counties and do it. Let's see what it looks like.
Is there a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Are you not?
It's all those four?
Well, this, let me say one thing. I think it's just all about transparency, and I think if we vote, every time we take a vote up here, we need to ask ourselves, are we being more transparent or less transparent? And I think this is about transparency.
All of those four? All of those opposed? Mr. Dathridge, Commissioner Dathridge?
Oh, very simply. I won't be long-winded on this one. I think I blew myself out on the last one. But we have our retreat coming up in a matter of weeks, and I think it's incumbent upon us to let the public see what we're doing. I would appreciate it if we could have it filmed, and I'm very thankful that we have somebody, a videographer, who can pick up his equipment and move to wherever we need him to be. And that's my motion, if there needs to be one. Otherwise, a consensus will do just fine. How do we feel about it, board?
Second.
You want to do a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. My motion, a second.
Any discussion?
I've got a question. I see the rate here is $500, and we're paying $800 for three hours for our county commissioners' meeting. Why the difference? I mean, we're talking about 17 hours for 500.
I may want to answer the question.
I'm going to oppose the motion.
May I speak? Sounds like free market system to me. We're getting a good deal.
That's, that's.
Even more reason to go with it.
The question is, why are we paying $800 for three hours?
There's lots going into it. I mean, this equipment, this man has bought over the years, and the editing, it's a lot. It's a lot. I know a little bit about editing film. It's difficult. It takes time. It probably takes more time to edit than it does to film these things.
Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I think Randy is enough of a public-spirited person. He knows he gave a low price, because he wants this information of what goes on to get out into the public. He's doing the public a service. And there's a lot of things that are discussed at this thing, and the public needs to know. Keeping this information away from the public just keeps the back-room deal going.
Transparency is always better than no payment.
I've been passing you all the evidence, and you don't give it to me, but the back-room deals. I don't think there's no back-door deals going, but I'm going to vote for this film. I didn't really realize how many people watch these meetings until I become a commissioner and got out in the public and talked to people. People want to see what we're doing. And if we didn't do the videoing, we would get a lot of feedback from them. So I'm going to vote for it.
I think we need to point out at this meeting, there is no action taken. We actually, we don't vote on anything. We just have good discussions. But there is no vote taken.
That's right.
Well, let me answer that by saying this to you. I'm tired of going to budget meetings and having people tell me, well, you decided that at the retreat. That decision was made at the retreat. So, yeah, there is a lot of decisions. That's the back-room deal I'm talking about. The public needs to see it. And I'm going to give you a speech at the retreat this year. It don't matter what happened at the retreat, I'm not agreeing to anything. So don't go into a budget meeting and start telling me that I decided something, because I'm not deciding anything with you guys. The public needs to see what's going on. Look at the millions that our budget's been going up every year for the last several years, and the $3 million that's hidden in the budget this year that in the audit doesn't show that it went up, because we borrowed $3 million. We actually spent $3 million more than what we showed in that audit. So, yeah, these kinds of covers up, the public needs to know about.
Ms. Chairman, if nobody else wants to speak, I'd like to say one closing point. I just, to restate this, I think transparency is better than opaque governing, and if we can show the folks what we're doing, show them what we're discussing, it's up to them to sit there and watch it. Lord knows, they sit there and they watch it, and they do, as Commissioner Brennan said, they do remark on it, and they are aware of what we do. Warts and all, I think it's important. I think the fact that Randy bid $500, I don't know if it's public service, it is a wonderful deal. I don't know how we can say no to that. I really don't. So I hope you all will reconsider if you're thinking about voting no and you'll vote yes. I really appreciate that.
Well, commissioners are going to look off that.
The people appreciate that.
If the hat's passed and $500 is raised to pay Randy.
Okay, it's time to vote. Any questions? All of those four?
Come on, guys.
All opposed?
More secret government, folks.
Oh, my gosh.
Hey, Brian.
A task for you, this is the agenda item regarding the MOU for the Rural Transportation Planning Organization. You have attached in your agenda an updated MOU for the RPO. The original RPO, the original MOU was created in 2006, and there have been some changes, both from DOT standpoint and some changes from the RPO itself in making things run more efficiently and providing some additional information. This was originally worked through by the RPO with DOT. It was, it came to the RPO in November of '08 with the updated one. They looked at it, all the participating members of the RPO looked at it and said that's what they wanted to recommend moving forward. So you have that. The RPO itself, just for your background, is made up of two committees. First, the Transportation Advisory Committee are called the TAC. That is essentially the elected officials. Traditionally, the elected officials who are the primary representative. And then there is the Technical Coordinating Committee, called the TAC, which is technical staff traditionally that advises on that. The TAC makes recommendations to the, to the TAC, the TCC, the Technical Coordinating Committee, makes recommendations to the Technical Advisory Committee, and then they vote on that to move forward in compliance with DOT recommendations. So we'd recommend your approval on this. And this is for all the counties that are in the RPO and for the non-MPO municipalities that are in Pitt County.
Second.
Question? All of those in favor? All of those opposed? Brian?
The last item you have is a request from the county's paid lobbyist, Mr. Joe McCleese. He's requested approval for a trip to Washington, DC to discuss FEMA flood map project with congressional representatives. The reason we bring this to you is that in accordance with his contract that you have, any or all expenses relating to that are in addition to his existing contract that you have with him. So we would need, you would need additional funds to be allocated for this. He's requesting that one or two members of the board go with him on that visit. And again, you'll see in that second paragraph, funding's not included in the commissioner's line item for that, so we ask you, if you approve that, you're going to need to put some money with it. If it's two people and McCleese, you could probably get away with it for $1,500. You go there, spend the night, a couple hundred dollars a night, I think, in DC for a hotel. And then if, and I'm assuming, and he mentioned that he would drive, and everybody could ride with him, so you're going to cut back on transportation costs there. So I would think you'd be able to do that for $1,500 or less.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
We're going to be in Washington, DC for Daco's Legislative Conference the first week in March. Is there any way we can invite our lobbyists up there during that time period versus?
You could, you're responsible for those costs as well. Anytime he travels out of the state on your behalf, you're paying those costs, so.
We wouldn't have the additional cost of the commissioner make it too true.
Plus, you're up there to visit with the people, and that's why you're there.
Well, for one thing, one thing that, you go to that Legislative Conference, and you're pretty well tied up from the time you get there until the time you get back, and we wouldn't have the time to visit the congressmen that we want to see, and Joe has lined up, and that's the reason why we want to make this trip, is so we'll have enough time to try to work out what FEMA do.
Well, the other thing that happens to you on that trip, so weather can turn on you, and you may have your day set up to go see these guys, and it snows the day before or something, Washington gets you sat down, nobody gets anything done.
That's happened before.
The other thing that I want to point out to you, when we, when I started this project, I started this project trying to get these FEMA maps approved, and everybody was just sort of, you know, la, la, that's why don't we do this? Nobody did anything. That's why you've already cost people in this county $5 million. An individual, a trip to congressman up there as a special trip of this is so important that we thought we had to come specially to see you is a lot more important than a bunch of politicians sitting around on the county commissioner day saying, yeah, we got to listen to those yo-yos, wonder what they're going to say. You're going to get a lot more done with a special trip targeting what your problem is than you are going up there and saying, well, here's our list of 20 problems, and oh, by the way, the FEMA maps just happen to be on year. You're not going anywhere with that.
And that goes in file.
That's exactly right.
I think we did this a year ago. We begged and pleaded.
Yeah. And it was just a part of the same general thing. It went into a five-page report, and that was the end of it.
So I don't know what a one day trip.
If you go to and target a special two or three senators and people, you're going to get a lot more out of this than you are going up there on your special day.
Any discussion? Ready to vote? All of those in favor? Opposed?
If you would, since you voted in favor of that, is $1,500.
Oh, yeah, $1,500. Is that in the motion? I move we spend appropriate $1,500 for the purpose of the trip.
So moved?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor? All of you.